About what is working well in our school system? And what might you suggest to us? For programs or services? To to improve our our school system. Particularly in light of the very difficult budget season we have coming up. We'd like to understand what your priorities are because. We identified as a leadership team in the school system several years ago. The the quality and the essential components of a high quality school system. There were three that we identified, and that is. Our ability to appropriately meet mandates, both state and federal and any any local as they may apply. Our ability to provide high quality teachers and support staff. High quality staff in general, because in this school system, everyone matters. Our curriculum. Is well thought out. Yes, it is based on state standards, but we go above those state standards. And so teaching and learning with high quality curriculum content and high quality instruction is essential. But it's not only focusing on academics. We want to do as much as we can to develop the social and emotional well being. Of all of our students, and I mean all of our students. The third very important component that we identified. Is understanding the values of the community. What's important to you? What do you expect out of the school system? What might be your suggestions? For improving our system? To provide your child with the greatest possible education. Now, we've always began our budget discussions early in the year with our administrators. We've identified a number of topics that need to be discussed in the development of our budget. But for the most part, the community has been involved towards the latter part of the budget cycle each year. And so this year, we thought. We would move that. To the beginning of the budget cycle. So this will be the first listening session of two that we have planned. As we are in the process of starting the development of the fiscal two thousand twenty-two budget. So with that being said. I'd like to invite you to make comments. To myself, to Dr. Cleary. To Ingrid Nielsen, the school committee members. Hopefully positive comments and suggestions that will allow us to take from this meeting. A sense of the community values that exist in this wonderful town. Well, thank you for for joining us. We'll be glad to interact when I'm when I'm not looking for this to be tonight. And there's an there'll be an opportunity down the road for this is a critique of our hy- hybrid model. Or any of the components of what we're offering. With this very, very difficult school year under the pandemic conditions. So we'll save that, we'll put that aside for another another meeting. But tonight, we want to hear from you. What's important to you based on where your children are or where they have been? In our school system, because some of you may have had children who have graduated and have been very successful in college and careers. So with that, I'd like to open it up to you to feel free to make any comments, any suggestions. To me, whether it's academics, whether it's school bus transportation, co-curricular activities, athletics. Everything is on the table for consideration. Because when we do this budget process with the leadership team and in conjunction with the school committee. We're going to have to look at a lot of different alternatives and a lot of different priorities. And we we'd like to hear your prior priorities tonight. So with that being said, I ask you to unmute yourself and ask a question. Hopefully, we'll see you on the screen. And we'll we'll take your comments, and if we need to reply to any questions or comments, we'll we'll do that.
And Bill, may I just add one other piece of clarification too? One of the interesting things about beginning the budget process during this time is. Kind of going back to the mindset set of a normal school year. And as we develop this budget for FY twenty-two, which is the twenty-one twenty-two school year next year. We are making the assumption that the budget will be a normal budget for a normal looking school year. If for some reason, due to the pandemic. We need to shift into a different type of school year, the way we had to this past fall. Then we will make the adjustments to the budget that had been built accordingly. But for the purpose of this meeting, and I know Bill has had mentioned about. Kind of not focusing on what we've been focusing on almost every meeting, which is the hybrid model and. You know, are students going back to school or fully remote or are we making any changes? But for the purposes of this, as we build the budget, we are building it, making or under the assumption that it will be a normal. School year, so keep that in mind as you're thinking about any suggestions that you may have.
Great comment. Amy, you've asked to be unmuted. Do you have a comment that you'd like to make, Amy Fontaine?
I didn't have to be unmuted, but I can speak. My name's Amy Fontaine. My son is in pre-K at Dabnasset and is going to be in kindergarten next fall. I I am in full support of full day kindergarten. And I know a lot of the parents on this call are in support of that too. And I guess. A lot of us are wondering what it would take for the full day budget to go into effect for the town. Because I know there was, I don't know, seventeen kids possibly on the waitlist this year that couldn't get into full day. And I know my son would benefit from full day. My daughter was fourth on the waiting list. A year ago, and she did squeak in, but. As as a parent, I am in full effect, full support of the full day, and I know. I know if others would speak up too. I think we want to know what would what would? What would, how can we get the budget for full day to go in for Westford?
Well, first of all, we're very much aware of the preference by many parents of of full day kindergarten. Regrettably, right now, for the last year or two, it has been on a fee basis. You know, I proposed full day K back about ten or eleven years ago and. Certainly proposed that it be funded through the town, but that has not been has not been possible. We will be working with the school committee through the budget development process to see if we can accommodate. All students, I'm not sure right now. Please do keep in mind that we do still have to offer. Half day program. In kindergarten, we can't. We can't force essentially everyone to go full day if we're charging a fee. Because the state only requires half day kindergarten. Okay, so that's important to keep in mind, but we certainly understand. The fact that. We want to be able to service every student who wants full day K. Will will plan carefully. I'm not sure if that will be entirely possible, but we're very much aware of that's what a number of you are looking for. Okay, and and Laureen, I know that, you know, you have communicated with me certainly, and we believe me, we're very much aware of it because we. What we what we don't want to create is is kind of the haves and the have nots. Unfortunately, we're we're limited by budget. I will say to you in in our discussions. With the town to this point in time, fiscal twenty-two looks like. Probably the most difficult budget year we will have had in the last thirty years in Westford. It's going to be very, very difficult, but. This is a priority that you have expressed, and we understand that, and it goes back to certainly last year and. You know, we know that this year is kind of convoluted with what we're able to offer, but. We we understand the desire to have every child whose parent would like them into a full day. Kindergarten program in in that program.
Bill, I had a follow up question to that. I don't know if you could see the the chat or not, I I wasn't sure if we were using that, sorry.
I'll bring that up now.
Sure. What I mentioned was that I I was concerned about the class sizes, not the individual class, let me clarify. The large incoming class that is possible due to COVID. I know I'll admit my myself, me myself did keep my daughter because she was on the young side and we had the option. And I have a feeling that many other people did that as well, given the uncertainty of this this year. So I am concerned about a large incoming class, which would mean if nothing changes, a large or waitlist. And also possibly a question would be. To possibly prepare for that, would moving up the registration of at least the people that we already know about in town, obviously. There would be people moving in, et cetera, that we can't control. Would moving up that date at all be useful or possible or helpful?
It may may very well be, we'll talk with the primary level principals about that. It would be interesting, Lauren, to see if there is in fact an increase in the kindergarten population. I'm not expecting that, and the reason I say that is. The birth rate, excuse me, the number of births in town. Has dropped from about three hundred, about fifteen to eighteen years ago. To sort of an equilibrium level of around one hundred and forty a year. And has been relatively stable, plus or minus about ten births. You combine that with what we've been seeing. With the in migration factor that a number of parents who are moving into Western with school age children. Have children who were in the upper elementary level with relatively fewer at the K to two, pre-K through two levels, so. We're going to keep a very careful eye this this year, we're going to. I was talking this morning with the town manager and the chair and vice chair of the school committee in a meeting with with Ingrid Nielsen, that we're going to. Be very careful in terms of presenting the enrollment data and our projections to the community and to the school system and to the town. Administration and boards, we need to break out the fact that our enrollment is down this year. But one of the reasons, two of the reasons it's down is because. A larger number of parents have homeschooled their children. Plus, we are not having the cohort students, the sort of the role model students, if you want to call them that, with the preschool age. Children, so that's about seventy-five to eighty students right there, so that somewhat artificially deflates. Our enrollment, now we will factor those students back in for next year. Now, a number of some people have said, well, you know, the the enrollment is low because of the number of remote students. Well, it doesn't make any difference whether they're remote or in person, they're still counted in our enrollment enrollment count. And so they're part of our, you know, our school system. But that's it, it's a good point, Lauren, we're going to keep a careful eye on that. Our our kindergarten numbers have 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 been dropping. Because of the drop in the live number of births and the the in migration of the upper elementary students primarily.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, great question.
Bill, thank you for addressing this topic, and if I may add, I think. To me, there's kind of two levels of solving this question, I know we've we've talked about it, but I think. I think the goal that that the end goal that we would all love to see happen, but that's a big budget challenge is, of course, having full day kindergarten. Available for free for anyone who wants it, and so obviously, we understand. The the issues with with achieving that, especially given the budget constraints of next year. And I know we've also talked about an interim. Perhaps solution that would allow us to eliminate the waitlist and what that might mean in terms of funding. You know, the funding impact to Westford or in terms of what that might mean if we did a sliding tuition, so. My question is, how can we in the community? Help explore some of these options, like is is there a survey that you can send out to parents or? How are how are how can we think creatively and help work with with you and with the school committee? To to look into some of these options that may make kindergarten, full day kindergarten available to all who want access to it next year?
I don't have any issue with sending out a a survey, I think we'll give it a little distance between all the surveys that we've been sending out in the last few months. But I would have no reservation about doing that, we've talked with our colleagues also in other school systems around the state. To understand what type of alternative for early childhood offerings they have. We've checked with the. The Department of Education to talk about different models, but you know, once again, Laureen, it all comes down to. Budget dollars, how do we fund it? But looking at, we're we're willing to look at any any alternatives, so that. You know, we'll stay in touch with you. Because I don't want to mislead anyone in the development of the budget or, you know, saying we can offer a program when we down the road, we decide we can't, so we're going to be cautious. But we'll move move forward deliberately with with an effort to try and provide that programming for all kindergarten students and. You know, follow the budget process carefully, because we'll have those conversations. Certainly, you must have some questions, all the people on our on our call.
Bill, a lot of comments in the chat about the topic, I don't know if you're looking.
I did have a question regarding from a town level, what would we need to do? You know, a town meeting to actually pass something regarding implementing full day kindergarten, and we have. Two hundred million plus in the budget, like in the in the excess funds. We always seem to be able to pay for getting a roof built or getting a. You know, the roads paved, I don't see why we couldn't find something in that excess two hundred million to fund kindergarten.
Oh, we don't have two hundred million, the town does not have two hundred million dollars in. In in excess funds, it's Brad who answered asked that question, right, Brad?
Bradley, yeah.
Yeah, Bradley, I'm sorry. I know, you know, the town issues bonds for capital projects. And there there is a sizable, you know, debt there, but that's not money that's available for operating budgets. What the town sets aside every year is is principal and interest, as you know, for the for the payment on those bonds, many of which are twenty years in in maturity. And so that money can't be commingled and used for general operating operating budgets. You know, Jessica, I see that you mentioned that ninety-six point four percent of public school kindergarten students are enrolled in full day kindergarten. And we understand we understand that. We. I I think some of them are fee based, some of them are fully funded by their their respective general fund appropriations. It's just that, see, we have a a unique situation here in that. About twenty-five percent of our population. Is school age children, and that's a very cost intensive segment of the population to any any community. So what that means is that requires an increasing amount of services, whether they be. To 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 address academic skills. Or to address the social emotional needs of our of our students. And so operating funds. Have never quite been able to keep up in a commensurate manner with the with the needs of our student population, so. It's it's now becoming progressively more difficult. I do think that for the foreseeable future. That you're going to see that kindergarten will be funded via fees. Until the COVID crisis subsides locally, statewide, regionally and and nationally. I mean, you you look at the trillions and trillions of dollars that have been taken out of commerce nationwide and. It doesn't bode well for communities around the country in terms of additional revenues. Jessica, did you want to follow up on that? Did you have an additional comment on that?
Hi, Bill, thanks for that. Yeah, for me, I just, I guess I'm asking a more generalized question, I mean, are we really okay with the fact that we are the ones contributing to this? Less than four percent of the entire state. I feel like we take a lot of pride in our, you know, educational system and, you know, I think that we can all agree on how important. It is at this particular age developmentally for them to be engaged in social, engaged in, you know, day to day interactions with their peers and. We all know that the half day program has an incredibly limited opportunity for all those things, never mind the arts and. You know, all the things that they're not getting this year as an example. And I think I just wonder if. Why is it, you know, that other things can get prioritized, or what is it that is prioritized right now? That, you know, maybe we could consider not prioritizing over full day kindergarten for our students, especially where. You know, we don't think it could be that many students, you know, it could be one classroom extra, you know, or could be. You know, a couple additional students in a classroom, as we had discussed last year, you know, depending on what it looks like, I just. I have a real discomfort with the fact that it's not equity and it's not equitable for all students, and I just wonder. You know, if the school committee, I know that we've had changes in the school committee since last year. And I know that some of those folks were not involved and that weren't a part of the committee last year, weren't involved in some of the discussions that we had. And I just, I want to make sure that our voices are heard for for the new folks on the committee as well.
Well, they were heard last year and and they're still heard, and we, you know, we we have a very supportive. School committee. You know, one of the issues that we have, one of the variables that we prioritize is is keeping our class sizes lower. And I do believe that has paid great dividends for us in the past and will in the future, because if. In in looking at studies of grade level configuration, et cetera. Most of the research indicates that class size is one of the variables, quality of the teacher and class size. Very important variables now. So that, you know, there's a trade off that we look at. We've looked at in the past, we look at in the future and say. Do we keep our class sizes reasonably low? Or do we begin to elevate them to reallocate those resources somewhere else? Tough tough decisions that we have to make and the school committee has to make. None of them are easy, because everything we offer to students, we think is is essential and. You know, we we have a school system that's rated near the top or at the top. But still in the bottom third in terms of per people cost. What that speaks to is the fact that we try to invest our money wisely. Where it results in the greatest returns, so. You know, I try to sort of gone around the block here to say that. Like every other year, we'll look at the priorities. Where our students are, the numbers of students in each respective grade, the staffing that we need, but not only the number of students. What are the, what's the nature of their needs? Okay, you'll see sometimes a class in a building will will have twenty-two to one, twenty-three to one, and another class will have eighteen to one, well, why is that? Because that eighteen to one class may have a mix of students that are struggling academically. Okay, or or have some other social emotional issues that we're trying to address as effectively as possible, so. We haven't forgotten about you, believe me. We know you're, they are there, you know, we know your interest is in everyone being able to have access to to full day K. I mean, I I do hope in some years in the future that it's funded. Out of the general fund appropriation, but for right now, what I see is is continuing to be fee based, okay? Other questions other than, and because I'll be glad to have, you know, meet with you on the side at any time with with Kerry and Ingrid.
Sorry, Bill, just one last as we close off this this topic, if you don't mind, for all the parents who are here. On the topic of kindergarten, what are the next steps? You know, in terms of looking into this and understanding what we can do and have following up on the conversation with you?
The next steps to. Follow the budget process, because we will be looking to. Understand what our appropriation level will be next year. What it will take to create a level services budget next year, which means everyone brought forward and all the programs and services brought forward from this year to next year. I I do feel very strongly. That it is going to be the most difficult year in in many, many years, but Laureen, to your to directly to your question. It will be a little bit of time before our budget is presented to the school committee, okay? We will probably be presenting our budget in early January. This town meeting now has been set at June twelfth instead of a March town meeting. Because of the uncertainty, the fiscal uncertainty. You know, we're hoping certainly that there is a reliable vaccine that is proven and safe. But we don't know that for certain right now, but it will take a little bit of time, Laureen and others, but. It will be well publicized in terms of. What topics are being discussed on what nights for the school committee meetings, I think that's one of the. And Avery, please correct me if I'm I'm wrong, I think we have discussed that in our budget subcommittee, that we we want to make sure that we chunk it in specific topics. So that parents in the community, our staff, know specifically what night a an issue is going to be discussed.
Yes.
Okay.
Bill, there's some questions in the chat regarding the later school start times, I know we've been talking about it for a couple of years and because of. Transportation costs and some of the other logistics, we have not been able to move forward with that, but the question, there are two questions. Asking about if we're considering later start times in the twenty-one twenty-two school year.
I I assume you mean in the question later start times for the. Middle school and and high school students based based on the research, sleep research. That is on the table again to look at for the twenty-one twenty-two school year. We're committed to somehow trying to make that work with the numbers. We're not sure if it's entirely possible, but we may be looking at some alternative transportation arrangements next year also, if. The budget shortfall is is as severe as it seems. In relation to our needs. I need to put that in perspective briefly for you. For about a fifteen year period where we experienced terrific growth and improvement in our school system. We averaged about three point four three percent. Each year, annual appropriation increase from the town. The last several years, it's been far short of that. About two, two and a quarter, two, two point four, two point five percent, okay, two point six. Next year, right now, the preliminary projections are one point four percent. Now, that's two percent less than the average that has allowed us to maintain level services for many years, so. We're going to be looking at all aspects of programs and services in our school system. And we have to look at service such as transportation and see if there are some modifications that could possibly be made that would save us money that could be reallocated. To save academic programs and important services, ancillary services to our students. What other questions do you have or comments?
There are some questions about. Teacher pay and whether our teachers are being paid comparable to surrounding towns. Concern about whether we're losing a strong and popular teacher. I'm not sure specifically what teacher or situation this person is referring to. But I I'm not sure, Tim, it might be better if you, Tim, oh, if you unmute yourself and maybe just kind of. Share what information you're looking for.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so. It's last year, there was a lot of emotion and discussion around the budget. One of the topics that received a lot of emotion and discussion was. Teacher pay, teacher pay relative to other towns. Teacher pay relative to increases over time. And in particular, number of teachers, because we were losing one. And the question of asking is how is that being handled in the approach to the budget process this time? And what kind of transparency will there be in that approach?
Well, the the process of setting and establishing salaries, as many of you know, is is statutory in nature. We are bound by chapter one fifty E of Mass Journal Law to budget, to negotiate in good faith. With our personnel. Our salaries, Tim, are reasonably. Competitive with what's called comparable communities, it's a group of communities that the state identifies. Based on types of students and the needs of students. And they sort of aggregate a group of communities that are similar in nature in terms of the composition of the student student body. We have not caught up to the average, as you know, there was an override a couple of years ago for salaries. This year, the staff, the teachers, focusing on the teachers, since that's our largest collective bargaining group, receives a two percent salary adjustment, a cost of living adjustment. Now. So the propensity might be to say, okay, well, we must be catching up. But we, even with the override, we're still below the average of. But we, even with the override, we're still below the average of the comparable communities. With a two percent increase compared to if our other comparable communities identified by the state also get a two percent increase, that's on a larger salary base. So they're growing at a faster rate certainly. So that, so that disparity begins to creep upward again in terms of our competitiveness. Now, I will say, I don't, I don't believe we have a high staff turnover. We did about ten years ago when uh, the town was in a position where we could only, we couldn't offer any cola for a year or two. Uh, we lost about eleven staff at that point in time who went for Bedford, Lexington, Acton, Boxer, et cetera. But we, we have not seen that in our school system. And I think because people like working here, we have a very strong and supportive, trusting, respectful culture. And that's important to, to people, uh, in addition to salaries. So uh, I do think, you know, we need to continue to maintain competitiveness. It's going to be increasingly difficult. Uh, but that's, you know, that's one of the intrigues of the entire budget and negotiating processes. Is how do we, how do we keep competitive salaries? And how do we keep enough staff? Because what it comes down to in many communities is, is compensation versus staff. And uh, and that's, you know, that's a difficult issue that we have to, uh, we have to face along with many other communities. So I do feel we're in a better place than we were three years ago in terms of competitiveness of salaries. Uh, we just have to be careful that it doesn't, that this disparity doesn't continue to grow because those, that average of the hot, other communities, we have higher salaries and then receiving the two percent, you know that that compounding increases more than our compound. Let's see, uh, Kerry, you see any other questions that um, we can, or comments?
I, I think we're caught up with the questions. There was a comment about um, there's certainly merit for conversations around full day kindergarten, later start times and some of these other initiatives. This particular person hopes that after the budget conversations, ongoing budget conversations last year, that topics such as Latin are not brought up for next school year as a cost-saving measure.
Okay, yeah, we, we, we heard the concern over Latin. If there are no other questions, I'm going to conduct this kind of like a teacher in the classroom. Jillian, I'm going to ask you, what's important to you? All right, if you could uh, let us see you or connect with your microphone. Um, tell us where your children are and what's important to you um, in our school system. It's Jillian, there you are.
Yes, sorry. I wasn't sure if you said Jillian or Joanne.
No, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So yes, they, thank you. So I joined the meeting because I'm newer to, to Westford. I've only been here for about two years. I have three elementary school kids, one of them, which is here right now. Give me a second. Hold on, sorry. Um, so, so we have many, many years of Westford Public School System, you know, to see in the future. And so one reason I came is purely just sort of out of curiosity. I'd never been to a budget meeting and wanted to hear and listen. Another issue was full day kindergarten. I'm very passionate about. I have a kindergartner this year. And I felt that because of what obviously COVID was, you know, unforeseeable, but because of COVID, what's happened with the kindergarten program specifically this year, I want to make sure that that doesn't happen for kids next year. You know, it also caused a lot of trickle-down effect between, you know, almost losing some kindergarten teachers and just a lot of other things that came as a result of our town not having full day kindergarten. So that was also one of the main reasons I came today to hear the discussion about that.
All right, um, if you don't mind, tell me where you moved from.
We came from Shirley. My husband and I lived in Shirley when we didn't have children and then we had three children. And it was very important to us to move to a town with a really great school system. And so that's why we ended up in Westford. The school systems here were just raved about and that's how we ended up here.
Well, glad to have you here. Unfortunately, the COVID experience doesn't uh, you know, present any school system in the best light, but um, glad, glad you're here with us. Any moving, in addition to full day kindergarten, Jillian, is there anything that uh, you would prioritize in our school system uh, for your, your children and others?
I think I'm still learning a lot about the different things, but I, so I don't know if I can speak very eloquently about everything, but I have heard about in the last couple of years, things that we've lost out on, like the pre-first, um, certain teachers. A, it's for math or for reading help. Um, I think there was some technology. Um, again, I don't know the wording. I guess I can't speak super eloquently about it, but cer- certain technology aspects that we lost, that the school system lost just within the budget the last few years. So because I don't know a lot about that, I guess I can't advocate too much for it, but I'd love to learn more about, you know, why we lost those things and are they important to have again into the future?
I'm going to address uh, this question to those of you who have um, children uh, approaching middle school or in middle school or even Westford Academy. Uh, one of my concerns is that um, local school systems don't offer vocational strands any longer. That, you know, the whole, the whole concept of specialization and comparative advantage has come into play in, in Massachusetts and, and other states where we have regional vocational technical high schools, outstanding schools. I always tell parents, we have two great high schools in, in Westford, Westford Academy and the Shoba Valley Technical High School. I'm interested in, in the future, would you like to see some degree of vocational strand reintroduced into local high schools? And in our case, in, in Westford. I'd, I'd like to see if I can get some sense of uh, if, if there is any focus on, on that. Because I'm, I'm concerned, the, you know, the Mass uh, Business Alliance for Education did a survey a few years back. And about fifty-five to sixty percent of the respondents indicated that they were, uh, from the industry, they were concerned about the lack of vocational skills of many, many prospective employees. And so any thoughts about that? Any um, perhaps some of you are not at that level yet with your children, but um, any thoughts on that? Let's see, I saw, who did I see? Uh, Wendy, did you want to say something if you can unmute?
Yep. So yeah, thank you. I actually think that that would be um, really great. So I have um, one child in elementary and two at Stony. And I think that it would be really good because there are those kids who it would be beneficial for. I think when we're looking at from now into the future, what is it that we're trying to be able to do with these children? It's really helping to them to be able to be set up for success, learning those skills. And if there can be some focus, because I think the Shoba, you know, tech is a great school. I think that there's some social implications should choo- children decide to do that within Westford. Um, and I think that those skills still need to be there, or they may want to go to Westford Academy, but be on, you know, still want to be able to explore some of those other options. So because right now it feels like very much an either or decision when you have a child in eighth grade. Either you're going to go completely down the technical route or you're going to go to Westford Academy. And to be able to see where they're wanting to be able to go, have those options, I think would be great. To be able to do that. It would open it up and open up people's eyes to those options as well.
Okay, just, uh, just wanted to dipstick on that. I'm going to shift back to a topic that is more germane. Tell me your opinion on class sizes. We've had school committee guidelines for many years of twenty-two to one, twenty-two students per teacher in a classroom uh, at the elementary level, twenty-five to one at the middle school and high school. Would you be willing to see that elevate to twenty-four to one or twenty-five to one? If it came down to needing to reduce staff, increase class size to be able to fund an array of programs in our, and services in our school system? Or see it rise at the middle and high school level? Tell me what's your thoughts about class size?
So I don't know what the research is on that, you know, where that cutoff is when they've looked at class size to be able to determine outcomes, right? So we want to make sure that whatever we're getting on one end, we're not losing on the other end. I think especially K through two, that smaller class size is incredibly important. I would say three through five stills, they're, they're gaining those skills, but it depends on what the class is made up of, right? If they're that balance that's there, um, because there are certain classes that you cannot have one teacher and twenty-five students. Um, if you want it to be a good experience for anybody at that age. Um, I think that there might be other options of if we can think about, you know, how could we use um, some of these other programs to fund themselves ultimately? If we are, you know, I don't know, if there's something related to um, you know, cooking, is there a way to be able to have that where it could feed back into itself and help offset some of those costs? Um, you know, maybe as they're creating things or as they're doing some of those tech, technical things that that can be a service to the rest of the community and be able to, you know, um, offset those balances. So I haven't, we haven't moved into high school um, necessarily. So I'm not sure how that works right now. I know they seem like they do okay, but it's, I'd have to look at what, you know, what is the difference in two students in that ratio um, per class?
Bill, I think what would be really helpful is um, I don't know if, if you've done this in the past, but presenting kind of those budget decisions in those terms of trade-offs so that the community understands what, what is at stake and what you're thinking about when you're making decisions and you're choosing to fund some items over others. Um, and because I know that, you know, you're, you're best placed to explain to the community the impact of those decisions. So really understanding and getting that view into, we have to prioritize these things because that's the impact. And unfortunately, that means these things can't be covered, I think, would be really helpful for us to get a sense of what's happening in the town overall. Um, and kind of transcend our understanding above and beyond where every family's individual children are, right? Because I'm sure it's, it's harder otherwise for a parent of an elementary student to understand the impact on, on decid- funding decisions at the high school, et cetera.
And if I may, I would add to that. Um, there's research on some of the topics that would be useful to present with the trade-offs. As I recall, the Gates Foundation did a lot of research on classroom size and pushed heavily on smaller classrooms. And it was a statistical sampling problem and the signal really wasn't there on a secondary look at the data. On the other hand, every study that has ever done a later class start has shown that that's extremely benefold, beneficial, especially for the teenage kids. And so if some of the research was paired with the trade-offs, it might lead to informed body of uh, townspeople on the discussions.
That, that's a, a, a very good point in that in this preparation of the budget, we will perhaps more than ever before be presenting certain benchmark data and, and research. Um, the one thing we always want to make sure that is it's, it's quality and valid research. Because, you know, as, as we all know, re- research can sometimes be skewed to say whatever, you know, the intended outcome they would like to see, but we want to make sure that it's um, good sample sizes, as you said, Tim. Uh, that it's a, a well-designed research and the conclusions and summaries are certainly valid. But we'll, you know, you've all got great suggestions in terms of that data because we are going to have to make some trade-offs uh, this year. There's no question about it.
Bill, we've got a hand or two raised, but on that same note, there's also a question um, about how parents can advocate to get additional funding for schools. One um, person had asked, is it a select board decision? They're just not sure where to go to advocate on behalf of the school system.
Well, the uh, the appropriation that we receive certainly comes from the town. The town is charged, every town in Massachusetts, uh, under the statute of proposition two and a half, is, is charged with the responsibility of submitting a balanced budget to town meeting. Anything beyond that would require either the use of, uh, you know, funds from reserves or uh, uh, an alternative is a general operating fund override. Uh, you know, sometimes people simplistically say, when, when, when either residents uh, or staff say, look, uh, we needed more money. Uh, sometimes people have a propensity to say, well, you should have asked for more money. Well, you can ask a hundred times, but if it's not there, it's not there. And there are only so many ways to fund uh, municipal services and school services. So the, the key is to, you know, stay informed, watch meetings, attend meetings, whether it's school committee, whether it's finance or, or board of selectmen, um, to talk about um, funding. Um, you know, and I, you know, certainly interested in the school system, but funding for all town departments certainly. That, uh, because that's the only way we keep our service level uh, at an acceptable level. You know, there has to be some longer-term financial plan uh, to sort of um, uh, mitigate the sawtooth effect of revenues in, in the state. And particularly the local communities. And I, I've often thought that, well, every, every few years, I've thought this about the last twenty-five years, every few years, uh, we should be able to pass some sort of general operating fund override to infuse more money. Because in this type of community where we, we had some years, and I, I don't mean to digress too much, but to just to put this in perspective. In nineteen ninety-nine, we had three hundred and two more students enroll for the school year compared to the number of students that left that prior June. Now, that's three-fourths the size of a conventionally sized elementary school. It's been very difficult in a town such as Westford to generate enough revenue. Since we don't have a large commercial industrial tax base, the incidence of taxation is borne primarily by you, the homeowner. It's been very difficult to fund essential services. So you've got to stay tuned, you've got to stay plugged in and, and know what's, what's happening. Because if you wait to the end of the road, to the process, it's too late.
Uh, Megan Eckroth had, has her hand up and John, um, Ken Estraro, you had your hand up earlier. So if you still have a question, I know it's down now, you can just put your hand back up and I'll keep an eye out for that. But um, let's turn it over to Megan for her question or comment.
Uh, yeah, can you hear me? I don't know how to make my voice. Um, I just wanted to follow up with the um, class size conversation and echo that I agree with the points that Tim and Wendy both made about certainly the research is there and the importance of small class sizes. But I think what's really important with this budget discussion is we have gone through some years of quite difficult budget discussions that have uh, had class size sort of wrapped into them is to understand it in context, much like we talk about topics like teacher pay um, or fees for things like busing will often show comparable communities and show people what that looks like. And I think a piece of the puzzle that is often missing when we talk about class size is exactly that. What would your first grade class look like if you moved to Concord or Acton or Littleton or Chelmsford? Um, I can tell you from looking, they're much larger. And so that doesn't mean that that's where we want to go. I'm not saying that. I think we've also had those discussions many times where people say, but this is a differentiator. This is what makes Westford, Westford. I'm not saying I disagree with that, but I think that begs the question of starting these budget discussions with what are our values as a school system? What our, are our differentiators? Latin rose to the top of that as one of those last year. The school committee felt that that was a differentiator and something that we wanted to preserve. Um, our small class sizes might in fact also rise to the top of that. But I think that that's an important broader discussion and I do think it's really important for the broader community. And I think as Lorene said, you know, if you have a kindergartner, you might not understand what that looks like at the high school and vice versa. You tend to be in the moment with your children. And so I think it's really important for everybody to understand what do those class sizes look like? What would they look like in comparable towns, other towns that you might, you know, that, that we sort of um, fall in line with more from an achievement perspective, I would say, not necessarily a market basket in other regards. So, so that's what I was going to say. I think those are tough choices and I think sometimes when we get to those decisions, um, it's so difficult because parents put faces to reductions when it, when we talk about class sizes and, and teacher sections. But I think when we're facing these difficult budgets, it's just so incredibly But I think when we're facing these difficult budgets, it's just so incredibly important that we are. Making choices where we still feel that we're definitely meeting the educational needs of our students, but. What are the trade offs? Like you said, Bill, you know, you need to understand, okay, well, if you want to keep your class sizes at sixteen seventeen eighteen, which is what we've been at, they don't even come close some years to meeting that threshold of the. Twenty two to one guidance. What does that mean as a trade off? So that's all I wanted to say.
All good points. Did you say John 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 Kenestraro? John, do you have a question?
I think he took his hand down, Bill, but there's a couple more questions in the chat. Elizabeth Almeida had asked, will PBL take place at Blanchard Middle School? Next school year, and I'm happy to address that question.
Sure.
We we have continued to focus on project based learning, although. You know, there are many initiatives that have taken a bit of a hiatus during this particular period of time for obvious reasons. But we do have lots of teachers who have really started to soar with project based learning. So. Is PBL being offered at Blanchard? The answer is yes. However, I'm kind of jumping to a conclusion here that you're referring to. The class that we have or the two sets of classes that we have at Stony Brook, where there are two co teachers. Teaching together, although the sixth and seventh grade model at Stony are a little bit different. And not necessarily that's that model over at Stony Brook. Was one that really came from a very special partnership amongst two teachers who wanted to give it a shot. They had the space for it. And it really happened organically. It wasn't a district wide shift that we're. Able to make for, you know, larger class sizes of it ends up being almost forty students. Where two teachers are co teaching, not every grade level at. Both buildings are conducive to that. So while there is PBL being offered at Blanchard. If you're referring to the co taught model at Stony, not necessarily. That was really organic from the teachers who participated in that.
No, I want to ask you a question of those of you who are listening. Something good always comes out of something that's not so good. And, you know, we've we've had a very difficult. Situation to deal with with all of the school systems across the country with this pandemic. But it has resulted in our doing more than we've ever done in terms of online learning. I'm interested in your reaction to that. Is that for your particular child? Is that a viable alternative if we were able to find ways to offer courses? At a less costly manner. In a remote or online manner. Tell me about your children's experience. Anything in particular? Everyone's so quiet tonight. Lorene, anything?
I mean, I have a kindergartner, so I would say for the younger grades, that's probably difficult to do. I mean, I've I've heard a lot from the community. You know, that obviously in person is very critical to all sorts of social social development, but I do think. That learning how to be online and function online is a very important skill as people become adults and this economy is much more remote work based. So I think even just for college preparation, I could see offering some classes online at the high school level to be really beneficial. Again, I'm not saying all right, just a a small subset as a way to teach kids those important skills. To to learn and and communicate online with a class.
Okay, good. Some good observations. Anyone else? Christie, any thoughts? Christie unmuted?
Christie Bates? I I actually agree as far as I have a middle schooler and a high schooler and online learning for them. Is, you know, it's been a very easy transition because they're used to the Google Classroom. They do miss being with their peers, right? I think we all recognize that that in class is definitely super beneficial. But I agree with what Lorene just said, as far as the high school, I think. Looking into having remote classes for some of those classes that the high school. Note doesn't offer now or would be a reduced cost would be great to to explore.
And in the comments, we have somebody who has a fourth grader who says that. Their daughter has done absolutely amazing with the remote learning and it's really worked out well for her. So I I agree with what you said, Bill. That there are in the end going to be positives for the school side of things from all of this. In terms of proficiency with being online and even. From the teacher point of view, there there will be a lot of this technology that will be carried over. From our point of view, right? We we never conducted meetings this way in any capacity, really. And now I'm thinking of some of the meetings that I typically have with either coordinators or when we meet with principals. They don't like leaving their buildings on certain days. It's difficult to do. And now we don't necessarily have to do that every time. So I do think it does open up a whole new world for the future, even when things get back to normal.
That's that's correct. That's that's why I'm feeling strongly. And Silva, thank you for that comment. I haven't spoken with you in a while, but it's great to hear that your your daughter is doing well.
If I may chime in just on what Carrie said, the other piece I wanted to add on to is. Having these types of meetings be online to me has been. A huge door opener for accessibility. I have very young kids. They go to bed at, you know, six thirty seven, so. Coming physically to a meeting, I think, is is much harder for a lot of parents with young kids. And so being able to have this online forum for the school committee meetings has has made it much more accessible.
It's it's really a time saver for us. I'll I'll tell you, we, you know, instead of traveling ten fifteen twenty minutes. To a meeting to and from, we can instantaneously shift as we do almost every day from one meeting to the next seamlessly. And it's been very efficient for us. And so we, I think we've learned a lot. We're still learning, but I think. You know, the western part of the country employs. Online learning to a far greater extent than than the eastern part of our nation. I I really do think we need to sort of. Move the envelope a little bit more and more here and move the target to to introduce more online learning. At a number of grade levels, particularly at the upper upper grades, as some of you have indicated. Let's see if there's any other questions.
Well, there's a couple of other topics, but while we're kind of on this one, I'm going to jump to a later question before going back to one of the earlier questions. And Avery had asked how everybody's mental health is.
Great question.
It is a good question and. I think one of the things that comes to mind is, you know, we we were spending so much time focusing on. Students' mental health and certainly part of your subcommittee, Bill. Or your committee, the the social emotional learning subcommittee also took into account the staff mental health, but I do think. The model has some wear and tears on staff members and how overwhelmed. They are with keeping up with this model to make sure that the students have a quality experience. Particularly at the at home part of their week and. And and that's quite exhausting and we look forward to diving in with the school committee. The survey results that we received from staff around their social emotional well being, but. Certainly, you know, you can talk more to it, Bill, but I was just commenting. To indicate that when I saw that, I immediately thought of teachers because we're hearing from them so frequently.
Well, we, you know, we we appreciate how you're hanging in there. Look, we're all parents, we're all grandparents. We know how difficult this is. Daily, you know. Chores and grocery shopping, laundry and everything else. I mean, I. You know, I'm familiar with all that. Okay, because there's a. My second shift is oftentimes just as busy as my day job. And so I I know what you're going through. I have to tell you, I was on a meeting with about twenty other Merrimack Valley superintendents. Last week and I. I came away from that meeting. Just constantly thinking about the comments of superintendent saying they were absolutely exhausted. That they were worn out and it was only the, you know, second month of the school year. Well, we, you know, we're not quite worn out here, but we understand the stresses and. Are there ways that we could help you other than providing daycare? Okay, and I know that's a big issue. But are there ways that we can help you in terms of reducing the amount of stress and anxiety? That you are experiencing, given the current conditions. And I know it's, you know, we're kind of deviating. From the agenda, but that that question by Avery was very important because. We've talked more and more about mental health needs. And the issues that parents are facing and educators are facing right now than we've ever had. So any suggestions on how we might be able to help you? And make it a little bit more palatable experience for you? Anything? No?
I would just like to.
Julian, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna speak as as a family who has been really struggling, I think, in a lot of different ways with with this year because of COVID and. You know, the fact that I have three little kids, you know, I don't have any middle school kids or high school kids. I'm a full time working parent. My husband is. You know, it has been in my house. A challenge, a lots of tears, you know, I've kid and I have kids who love school, have always loved school. And for the first time ever this year, making comments about not liking school. And so it has been really stressful on them and stressful on me as a mom to hear and see how much they're struggling. And so what you just posed is a great question. I don't know. I don't know what else is helpful other than, like you said, childcare or having the kids all be back into school full time. It's it's a tough question because. I don't know with a with a full time working parents and three little kids, I don't know what I don't, I guess I don't know the answer to that question, but we are, we're definitely struggling over here a lot.
And and we realize that, believe me, we we don't. We don't take a nonchalant attitude towards this. We we understand because we talk to families every day. And some are dealing well with it, and mostly those who have children who are at least into middle school and and high school. Some upper elementary. It's it's the really the early childhood level that is very difficult for lots of parents. I just just want to digress for one second and, you know, the governor came out last week with the statement that. He thinks it's time for students to all return to school. You know, there was just a little qualifying statement, if feasible. Well, and there was a photo opportunity today in in Carlisle, apparently. Where the governor visited a school in in Carlisle that, you know, has a very low enrollment. And can accommodate the six feet of spacing. We can't accommodate the six feet of spacing and and bring all the students back. If we if we were ordered to bring back all students, which which we wouldn't be, but I'm just saying hypothetically. The only way we really be able to do that is double sessions. Have half the students, let's say, pod A start at seven o'clock in the morning and go till like moon time. And pod B start at one o'clock in the morning, go to six o'clock at at night. And that's the only way they can be accommodated because with six feet of distancing. With our enrollment, we don't have the physical space capacity to be able to to do that. And so it's put a lot of pressures on school committees and superintendents across the state. And there's a there's a real dichotomy here when you're shutting down certain businesses. At certain times, issuing mask mandates. Okay, you're lowering once again the the groupings that can take place at any one time, but then you're saying it's okay for all the kids to come back. Well, that's 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 difficult. Okay, let's Carrie, any questions you have, any comments you want to elicit from parents?
Well, I I've got just another. Suggestion from a couple of parents actually in the chat, talking about language instruction. Starting earlier in the elementary levels and how important that is. One. Parent had mentioned that in some cases, one could argue that that's even. More beneficial to students than a full day kindergarten because. They have, you know, some quality daycares around and that can focus on academics for the other part of the day, whereas. Feeling like language might be a priority for this particular person. And then another comment had seemed to agree with. That comment. So that's an interesting thought, thinking about how to get the languages earlier into the elementary schools.
Can I ask what what age does what grade does a language start in Westford at schools?
It starts formally in seventh grade. However, we in sixth grade, the students spend the year. In a part of the year in each of the languages that we offer so that they can explore in order to choose their preferences for seventh grade, which. Language they'd like to select moving forward.
And and that's only if they don't need any extra services. So if they need a little bit of help with executive functioning or anything else. The language option gets completely removed from the table.
Right, so additional supports are offered to families if students may need to prioritize other areas first. That's right.
It's interesting question, Carrie, because, you know, historically in the United States and many school systems. You start things such as foreign language programs at the high school level, when it should be, as you indicated, at the early levels. To allow children to gain that fluency. Okay, and 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 practice the language as they progress up through the through the grade levels and it's. I think a lot of other countries do start it at earlier, earlier. Earlier grades and and we should do that also. It's similar to a conversation we had this afternoon in the. We had an excellent diversity, equity and inclusion meeting, and we talked about the fact that. Working with students about diversity, respect, inclusiveness. Shouldn't just begin at the high school level. It should begin at the earliest grade levels, age appropriate, of course. And be an integral part of everything we do in our system, so. All right, I need to stop talking because I editorialized too much, but what what other comments, priorities do you have? Is is transportation important to all of you if we went to just statutory requirements for transportation, which means we wouldn't transport basically? Students in grades seven through twelve? Is that a is that a sacrifice that you would be willing to make to fund other programs such that? Middle school and high school students would have to find transportation to have their own transportation to school? Now, I'm surprised.
It would be very hard with for families with two working parents.
Yeah, and given that the middle school and the high school start at the exact same time. That would be to get from Stony Brook to Westford Academy. To drop off kids to to have the same start to. I guess one question related to that. So once seventh grade hits, we have to pay for. The bus, what percentage of that is offset by the school budget versus what the parents actually pay?
Yeah, good question. angry, you want to chip in on that one?
I don't have it right in front of me, but I believe it's the budget covers about. Well over half.
Yeah, I.
It's like forty five fifty five, maybe.
Yeah, I was gonna say almost like like fifty, from my recollection, about fifty eight percent is covered in the rest in fees.
Yeah.
What's that?
I thought it was forty. Yeah, forty sixty, forty five fifty five. It's somewhere in that range.
Don't don't the sixth through, I mean, seventh grade through twelfth grade actually subsidize more of it since a lot of the K through five? Are within if they're within two miles, they're free or K through six?
If they're if they're outside of the two miles, they're.
I'm sorry, outside.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm just wondering, Bill, with your question. How much money, you know, if we cut back on busing for seven through. It would have to be seven through twelve because sixth graders are required by the by the state. What would the savings be there and what could you provide to offset that?
Well, there's where we, you know, we we have to look at the enrollment and I I couldn't give you right now, Christie, the specific. Number of buses that would be saved and therefore the amount of cost that would be saved. We'd be able to calculate that certainly. Keeping a, you know, a margin of maybe one or two more buses than we might absolutely need because there are always, you know. Extenuating circumstances that require another bus for some some reason. But that's a that's an issue. I'm going to pose a question also that I I'd like your response to. About twenty five years ago. The school committee asked me to cut our transportation cost, our school bus transportation cost. By about a third. by about a third, but maintain as much of the transportation service as we presently had at that time. And the only way that was possible was by going from three different school starting times during the day to four different school starting times. In other words, a four-tiered system. Now, many of you were probably not here at that time. That, that four-tiered system had the high school going first, middle school, grades three through five, and then K to two. Now, the high school started about the same time that it does right now, about 7:30. Middle school, a little bit later. Three through five, a little bit later. And K to two actually started at 9:30 in the morning and ended at 3:35 in the afternoon. What's your feeling about that type of schedule in this day and age? Now, that might give us an opportunity to reconfigure our school's starting times, okay? In terms of the sequence of who arrives first and who arrives last. Tell me about your thoughts. Any thoughts? Is there anyone? I know Ohio, you were here at that, at that time. Ohio's been with us for many, many years. What are your thoughts about that?
Bill, wasn't that a model that was explored for late start time, a four-tiered system?
Avery, were you going to say something? Because I was just going to say, I don't believe that was a real integral part of it. I think we, they basically stuck with several different alternatives of times that we took in the leadership team, and we spent about a month trying to figure out if they could work, just changing them sometimes two or three minutes or... But that's something, Kristi, that I may have to look at again, okay? Because what is our core mission? Our core mission is educating children. Do we need to get the kids to school as safely and home as safely as possible? Yes, we do. Do I feel comfortable with children walking to school? No, not particularly. And, you know, in the Nav, which is a great, great neighborhood of historical walkers, different than students walking on 225 or, you know, some other busy, Route 40, et cetera. So, all right. What other, any other ideas, suggestions, priorities that you have that you want to see us try to address?
Bill, if I may, I didn't want to avoid your question, but I really don't have an answer for you. It's a difficult one. And over the years, as I've served on committees, I've always sided on the side of safety. Lack us out with sidewalks and restrooms, et cetera, et cetera. But the general comment I have, I really enjoyed listening to this discussion and some of the comments that have been made on numerous topics. I think it's very productive and helpful. And I hope the community, you know, understands and also understands the concerns of the parents who are here, particular kindergarten. To hear that over and over again, but it's a small part of the total pie. But if I'm allowed, one question is, you expect a severe concern about the budget for next year, a stronger concern than I had anticipated. I was wondering what assumptions you're making to come to that assessment, in particular on state aid? And are you disallowing any kind of federal bailout? Or not counting that?
Well, we have, that hasn't been factored in, and the, those figures and estimates, Ohio, come from Dan O'Donnell, as you know, who is a superb finance director, and Dodi Ross, an excellent town manager. And those are the figures that we, you know, we have been talking about. And it's primarily because of the loss of federal, state, and local revenues. I mean, if you look at certainly the loss of the hotel and meals tax in Westford alone, it has to be at least a quarter of a million dollars because of the lack of occupancy. And, you know, that's a, that's a tax that the Board of Selectmen passed, correct me if I'm wrong, about five or six years ago, and has brought in generally, I think, about $400, $450,000 in revenue each year. But that, even something like that, as a result of the COVID crisis, has been cut significantly. So those are the estimates by the, by the town's finance staff, Ohio. And, you know, we don't, we don't think there'll be a lot of variability, right, as of right now, but we don't know. We just, that's why the Selectmen, the other night, decided to delay town meeting to mid-June instead of March, because we still don't have the final figures for fiscal, you know, '21, never mind projections for fiscal 2022. Gloria and Avery and Alicia and others, and Chris, any questions that you would like to get answers to that you feel are important to understand as we go into the budget process? Nothing?
I'm just happy to yield our time to the parents.
And look forward to the finance, the new finance Subcommittee really becoming a part of and a functioning part of the budget process.
Very much so. Any... Go ahead.
Bill, I'm just, I want, this is great. Thank you so much for doing this forum. I'm just wondering if it's possible to, I know this is difficult, but to bring in teachers or administrators to talk together with parents? I know you reach out to your sta, to all the staff at the schools, but it would be great for parents to hear what they're saying, too? As far, what are their priorities?
Yeah, there's, you know, there's a good side to that. There's a complicated side to that in terms of, if somebody starts lobbying for something with their teacher or complaining. So I'll, you know what? I'll talk with our staff about that and our administrators. You know, a person who feels comfortable with people engaging in conversation. And let me have that conversation with our leadership team and our staff. I'm not sure if anyone would feel comfortable about that yet or with that, but it's worth having that conversation with them. Gloria, did you have, Avery and Gloria?
I was just going to get to Jessica's question about the finance Subcommittee. I think that's probably what Gloria had just seen, too. That is a new Subcommittee of the School Committee, and it's myself and Gloria and Chen. And we meet with Ingrid and Bill every other week to sort of put the, we just, at the last school committee meeting, you may have heard, we just put together our priorities for fiscal 2020, 2022, as far as what the school committee finds important and what we're going to have to look at for the coming year. Those are public meetings, and the agendas are posted. We do have another meeting coming up next Monday morning at 8:00 a.m.
What I was going to add is, one of the things we've been talking about on the finance Subcommittee is how to better educate the public about the school budget, some of its complexities, the trade-offs, mandates that it must comply with, and what would also be helpful for the public in terms of information throughout the budget process. So, so if anyone does have thoughts on things you heard during the budget season last year that you found confusing, that would be helpful information for you to have as kind of an overall understanding of the school budget, please feel free to share that this evening or send us emails and let us know what would be helpful.
That's a good point. That's, that's one of the things I wanted to, you know, kind of close with, is that let's not make this just a singular, discreet, or even the second budget forum. We have opportunities to talk. If you want to get together, a group of you with me in terms of either online or appropriately distanced, in person, let's do that, okay? Because I just, I want to make sure we understand the values in this community. And with that, I'm not sure if there are any other questions or comments, any other priorities that you would like to express?
Bill, it's Jessica Maroon again. Sorry, I had put this in the comments.
Go ahead, Jessica.
I had put this in the comments, just because it wasn't my idea, but somebody else had mentioned it, and I really loved the idea of setting, setting values, you know, for, for the school system and for Westford as a town, you know, for our school systems. And I, I think that if, if, if we were to kind of find the right way to do it, whether it be via, you know, sending out a survey or two to poll the actual parents with students that are going to the schools, as well as the teachers who are faced with these children on a daily basis, and really try to garner what the true values that we as a town want to hold for our school system to, to your, you know, to what you were just saying. You know, I think this would really help people who are on the school committee and people who are making budgetary decisions weigh their options when it comes to making those more difficult decisions like language versus full-day kindergarten, like later start times versus, you know, I don't even know, like teacher salaries. You know, these are all important, and I don't think any of these can be downplayed, but they're difficult decisions. And I think right now, a lot of it can be personal if it's not clear what the town really values or what the people with students really value.
Yeah, great, great points, Jessica. Avery?
So Jessica, to that, I think that's an amazing idea. And when, in the next year, we will be having the opportunity to create a new strategic plan for the school system. It was paused this year with the pandemic, and I wonder if, at that time, it would be good to get the public input on values and, and make sure that everyone understands the mission statement and incorporate some of that into the strategic plan and looking at the next three to five years for the school system.
Yeah. When I put together the original visioning committee back about, oh, I want to say 15, 16 years ago, we had a broad base of community members, and we'd like to incorporate that again in terms of setting a new vision. I mean, look, I loved working here, but it's time for me to retire. So I won't be here, but it's, it's, it's important that we have another broad base of parents involved in that visioning process, which will feed into the strategic plan, okay? You know, we've got, we've got great cohesiveness in our elementary school improvement plans. The principals did a superb job on Monday night presenting those. And so we're headed in a consistent, focused direction right now, which is very, very important. And so, you know, it doesn't happen, the quality of the school system doesn't happen without your, your support. And I mean that seriously. It's, you know, there's, this has been a wonderful town. Everyone has always tried to make things happen and work out well for not only students, but for residents. And so if there are any other questions, we're going to do this again. So tell your neighbors, please, because next time, we want double the number of people on the call. And Tim, I'm not sure if everyone can see Tim's screen as I can. Tim, can you tell me what that picture is?
It's a stuffed pepper.
I thought so.
With, with eyes.
I have, I have been staring at that all night, and if that's what you make, please send me the recipe, will you?
Absolutely.
All right. With that, you know, we'll, we'll end it. We'll have another one in a few weeks. Can't thank you enough, school committee, parents, Ohio, everybody who's been with us for many years. Thank you again. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving, if we don't connect before then.
Have a great night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.